The Topeka City Council Meeting will come to order. Please rise as you are able and give your attention to Councilman Emerson for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Tonight's invocation will be by the Reverend Lynn Lambertie of the Highland Park United Methodist Church. And while he makes his way over to the podium, I just wanted to say a couple of words about Highland Park United Methodist. Anyone who's grown up in Highland Park or East Topeka knows that that's been a real star ward of the community over there. As I told him earlier, I've been in that church hundreds of times as a Cub Scout, Wee Below, Boy Scout, you know, been to weddings there, concerts. They really reach out and do a great job of engaging the community. So, really appreciate everything that Reverend Lambertie and his congregation does.
Mayor, members of the council, and all of the folks gathered here, I bring you greetings from Highland Park United Methodist Church and the community in which we're located. May we pray. Oh God, we thank you for the blessings of this day. And we thank you for the opportunities that it presents, for governance, for good discussion, for exploring the problems that confront our community, and for finding solutions to those problems. May the people involved in this discussion find your wisdom. May they have good discernment. May their listening skills be excellent. And where there is disagreement, may it be done in respect. Help us all to grow closer together, closer together with each other, closer to you. I ask you to bless all the members of this body, to bless the folks who are here tonight, to bless our community, our state, our country, and this planet on which we live. Amen.
Amen.
I claim allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is a presentation this evening. If the interim city manager would introduce, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. We have some really great departments, and they're doing some really amazing things, particularly on the technology front, whether we're talking about our Open Data Initiatives or what we're going to hear tonight from the interim fire chief. They've enacted a program related to MDT's mobile data terminals. Chief is going to go into those a little bit and kind of describe the benefit they bring to the department, and just some background on that particular issue. So I'd like to ask interim chief Sigal to come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I'm excited to present this to you guys here today. It's a little bit of what your investment in your fire department and what we're able to do with it now and what we're going to do with it in the future here. So I've kind of titled this "Back to the Future." A little bit about what these mobile data terminals are, and they're truly just computers is what we've enabled. It's a tablet computer that's coming around there, doubles as a brick if necessary, but they meet our rugged needs for the department environment in which we function there. A little bit about the program there. It does take a team to do this, and as you see listed on the screen there, obviously from the fire, but IT, fleet, dispatch, purchasing, and vendors there were greatly involved with to achieve this project. It's been talked about for years. We first introduced computers to the fire department back in 1994 is how long when they first made that switch over there. So to kind of see this come to fruition is a neat adventure there, but you had over 15 people directly involved with it. And then a financial investment, just in the hardware alone of the actual devices, the mounting equipment, to get it installed in the trucks and the fleet there of over $143,000. So one of the things that this gives us are the enhanced capabilities. And so on the screen there, it's maybe a little bit difficult to see, but we can see each of our apparatus, and we can actually see their location and status at any one given time. The date that I grabbed this screenshot, we actually had a fairly decent grass fire going on the south end of Topeka. And so what you see there in all the light blue, there are all the units that have been assigned to that call. We can see whether they arrived. We can see additional units en route. And so from a command and control, this gives it that ongoing of knowing where your units are at or at any one given time. So this is our unit status. We can see when units are out of service, all the very different things along those lines, the locations and the things related to it. The next screenshot you see there is that we can flip these over to night mode, so that way it doesn't disrupt vision along those lines. But the biggest thing to take away from this screen here is this improved accuracy. Under the traditional system of the radio and asking the dispatcher to hit the keystrokes there, if additional units are going en route, they might be delayed in giving that response. So you'd have these times you'd key up on the radio, and there'd be these delays for that to occur. Well, in order to get you guys those accurate numbers of what is our response time, what is our on-scene time, now we can all gather that in an accurate format, and that format comes just by the guys tapping the button. So on the right there, you can see some of the available statuses that the units can put themselves on. And now that we start this data gathering that we haven't had real good access to, we can see if they're out for training, for example, at the garage, whatever that need is. So the accuracy that comes with that is greatly improved. Another component of it that we're learning, and this is working with some of the other departments of GIS and importing these maps into the system there, is not only can we see the location by automatic vehicle location or the AVL system, but the maps there, we can go in and overlay our hydrants at nights especially. Sometimes it can be difficult to locate the hydrants. So with that capability then, we can actually see where those closest hydrants are at those times there. And working with the GIS departments in the county there, we're increasing that mapping capability that we have along with that. Some of the details that we get on the calls there, so I pulled again just the details that as a unit is on the call, they can actually see what we see is that narrative that you listed out there. So it's the dispatcher's taking notes. That used to have to be communicated across the radio. So now the units actually have that listed for them right at the beginning there. So you can see in that situation there that MTA was en route with the brush trucks. We kind of know some of these other things that are going on. The phone number, if we needed to call the individual back, we can make that phone call right then and there if needed there, and as well as other data. One of the key things on the screen there down here at this area where it indicates our ops channel, that gives us the ability to know what channel is assigned to that call. So we're kind of combining everything with this all at one time. Some additional features that this is going to give us that we have right now and that we're incorporating into the future is the mobile fire inspections with these here. This is an example that Chief Martin said here the other day was that we had the opportunity that they can actually just snap the picture with the tablet of the code violations right then and there. It's all logged into system, becomes part of the record. So the mobile fire inspections is going to be a continued and growing part on that. The safety information, I mentioned on those details page there, if there's a house watch, vicious dogs, any of those types of things there, we have those things as well. Since it is a computer, any of the mobile web applications, if it can be installed in the computer, we start having access to those as well. And then the one that we're in the phase of rolling out right now is our air pack monitoring. Our current air packs have a system that we resurrected and found out that it works on these tablets there. So we can actually see the firefighter's air status at any given time on the scene, given an increased accountability as well there. Our training officers could take these to the stations. We have the cables so they could plug into the TVs for additional training, so it becomes a mobile platform that way. And maybe some of the future would be some type of community interaction, taking surveys here in Philadelphia right on our tablet and along those lines there as we expand into the customer service satisfaction, gathering email, and working right along those lines right at that time. So several opportunities that we have with it. So I turn it back to you guys for any questions.
So is there one unit in each of the apparatus that goes out?
Correct. Every fire apparatus in Topeka that's on the front lines there has it installed, as well as the chief vehicles and some of the support vehicles. And then they all have the docking stations that we can swap those in and out as needed. So it made it very universal that it just literally click it in.
Is the information stored so that there can be a tracking of when we go? I know we always look at how long response times are. Would that be shown there?
Sure. So with the additional programs that we have through CAD and what we call our data analysis and mapping program, with that one then, we query that data and we can start pulling out those reports and starting to look at it along those lines.
Amazing. Very good. Councilman clear.
That was my question.
Councilwoman Dela Isla.
Thank you, Mayor Wollgas. I was going to tell you guys, those computers are amazing. I went for a ride along, and one of the challenges that the firemen had was the fact that when you receive a phone call, they would start counting the time as of the phone call, and it was not accurate. So now with the computer, they're able to say exactly when they leave. So it's a better tracking system. And in addition to that, one of the great things that this computer does is that as dispatch is writing their comments, they can look at the call, and it's live, real time. Everything that dispatch is writing, they're able to see while they're on the road. So this is great technology. I'm excited to see this rolling.
Very good. Excellent. Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you. A couple of things. Chief, I like whoever did this. They put page numbers on it, and that's great. That's also my...
I heard that was a good thing to do.
That is a good thing to do. Because I can't express how staff doesn't do that, and then we don't know where we're at. But that's awesome. Second thing, I think the program that we have with the ADH, you know, how they have to fill out their form?
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to think of that program. Help me out here.
Either the red file or the safe program.
Safe program. I'm going to put a plug in there. It's very important to fill that out because with those, with your little laptops, that would come across. Am I correct?
We have access to that information as long as it's loaded into the system there.
Exactly.
That loaded up.
Exactly.
So it brings that information with us.
So while they're reading that, they'll be able to know that Suzie is, you know, is in a wheelchair, and that'd be all the more reason to make sure that we get there and our guys know what to do. I appreciate that, and I think technology is great, and I think we're continuing to do a good job. And I do want to commend the fire at Ninth and Canstah Avenue. I know this is a little off course, but those guys got in right away. There's elderly, a lot of elderly people there, and they did a good job. And the more tools we can give you, the better you guys can serve the citizens. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, presentation? Thank you very much. It was very exciting, exciting to see the technology.
Absolutely.
And good use of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will proceed with the roll call.
Mayor Wollgas.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Clear.
Here.
Ortiz. I'm here. I didn't get the memo not to be here.
Oh.
Emerson.
Here.
Dela Isla.
Here.
Jensen, Schwartz, Cohen, and Harmon.
And something fell off over here on the side. Actually, I received word today that both councilmembers Cohen and Harmon have business engagements that require them to not be here. Councilman Cohen is hopeful of joining us during the evening. So just the six of us will handle this tonight. We will then proceed with the appointments, and there is one appointment with, if it meets with your approval, councilmembers and city manager we wish to pull because Doria Watson would like to be here when she is, we take action on her. So if your approval, we will proceed with the other appointment. Clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Mark White to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term ending March 15, 2019.
Your pleasure. Councilwoman Dela Isla moves to approve. Councilman Emerson seconds. All those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no. The mayor does not vote.
We have five yes.
Five having voted yes. That's right. We only need five in this case because there's only, there's six. And so mayor isn't voting. There are nine potential. You always have to have at least five, which we do in this case. So Mr. White is appointed, and he is here. If you would speak, if you would stand up. Mark White is with P1 Mechanical Engineering. Thank you. Appreciate your service. And then we will proceed with the consent agenda.
A is a resolution introduced by councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as Topeka Civic Theater's Art of Murder to be held on June 17, 2017. B are minutes of the regular meeting of March 7, 2017. And there's a list of open after midnight renewal applications in front of you, and staff is recommending approval.
It's a consent agenda. Your wishes. Councilwoman Hiller moves to approve the consent agenda. Councilwoman Clear seconds. All those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have six yes.
Six having voted yes. Consent agenda is approved as read. Proceed with the action items and resolution.
Okay. A is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber proposing the establishment of the Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District for the promotion of tourism.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just by way of brief background, as always, this item has been discussed at several meetings in the recent past. And what is before you tonight is a very simple step and a multi-step process, and that step this evening is to establish a public hearing date on this. If this resolution is adopted, the net effect will be that the council establishes a public hearing date of May 9th for this item, at which time you can hear concerns from folks and have additional discussion on it if you want. This is really the third step in this process, probably. You heard a report from the committee that was appointed by the mayor. You heard that report last time, and they outlined some of the parameters, including the boundaries of the district and what the funds would be used for and where the funds would come from. And so this evening, again, the next step in this process is to move forward with the establishment of a public hearing date. That date is May 9th of this year, so just in about two months, really.
Okay. Is there discussion or questions? Mr. Gerber. Councilwoman Hiller.
I would go first.
All right. We can have a motion to approve and a second. We do have public comment. The first person to speak is Kayla Bitler.
My name is Kayla Bitler, and I am the general manager for the Holiday and Express here in Topeka, as well as a director of operations for Maple Management Company. I'm also actively involved in the Topeka Lodging Association, and I'm currently serving as president. My purpose today is simply to encourage you to establish the Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District. The hoteliers alongside of Visit Topeka and Downtown Topeka support this measure as a means to provide funding for the downtown plaza. Now, I have clearly not attended as many city council meetings as all of you. However, it seems to me that it is a rare thing for a group or an individual to present to you all a solution as opposed to a problem. I'm really hopeful that you will embrace this T-Bit as the solution that it is and appreciate it as a means for an impassioned group of individuals in the tourism industry to accomplish their goal of not only encouraging tourism in our city, but also of enhancing the lives of locals. Let us help tourism and help Topeka by establishing this Tourism Improvement District. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The second speaker is Kurt Young.
I'll pass.
All right. Mr. Young passes. We have before us a motion and a second to approve the resolution on the Topeka Business Improvement District. No other discussion. All those in favor vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have six yes.
Six having voted yes. The resolution is approved. We go to item B, a resolution.
E is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Doug Gerber establishing a date for a public hearing concerning the continuation of the 2013 to 2017 neighborhood revitalization plan for an additional year.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As with the first item, this item has been discussed at previous council meeting. Again, as with the first item, the net result of adoption of this resolution would be to establish a public hearing date for the purpose of extending the neighborhood revitalization program. That public hearing date would be April 4th, 2017. I'm going to ask Mr. Feiner to come forward and speak to any questions that you might have on this issue.
Mr. Feiner.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor. Good evening, councilmembers. I am here to just refresh a little bit of your memories from a couple of weeks ago as to what we're doing, kind of what is being proposed, and then answer any questions. As interim city managers spoke, the action tonight is just to set a public hearing. It's not to adopt continuation of the program or any changes to the program. The key recommendation last, as you know, it is expiring at the end of this year. Key recommendation was to actually not make any changes until next year. We want to have our health map catch up to our neighborhood revitalization program. They're out of sync right now. So why is that important? We use the health map to determine the boundaries for the neighborhood revitalization area. The last time the NRP was approved was in 2012. The last time the health map was approved was in 2015. And so we have, what we'd like to do is have that, and that has, over the years, driven the decisions as to where we do the NRP and where we don't. So we can, so that's what we were proposing. We think next year, we would have the latest data to determine what those boundaries should be and make policy decisions at that time. Right now, we have targeted at-risk and intensive care areas for the program. And we also could look at other options if the body wants to open that up. So there is also a bit of a failsafe, I don't know if you know this, in the plan. You can approve structures outside of the boundary to get the rebate. So anything, that takes a special action of your body. Anything that's a dilapidated structure could be worthy of preservation, could be approved as part of this program. It doesn't have to be in the boundary. There were some questions last time, and I did put together a handout that would help maybe explain some of the answers to those. We were asked last time about who uses this, what is the kind of the user trends, if you will. And so you have two maps. The top map, both maps show the same thing, just the top map is from 2007 to 2012. And then the map underneath that shows the last three years from 2013 to 2016. So on the map, you can see the boundary of the program is outlined in black. You have, that's the hatched area. The dots on the map, the yellow dots would be the residential applications. The green dots would be the commercial applications. And the size of the dot is based on the size of the investment. So the bigger the dot, the larger the investment, and you can kind of see how that works. The underlying health map that's on here, this is part of the problem. The underlying health map on here is not the health map that was used to determine the boundaries five years ago. It changes. Things change in midstream, and we don't, so we have to, we can't change the health map, I'm sorry, can't change the NRP boundary based on those without going through the entire renewal process again. So that's why we want to sync them up, so that whenever we adopt the NRP, we have the latest health data to be making those data-based decisions. And then you can have better information in front of you to make those policy decisions as to where you want the program to be and how you want it to be affected. The last page on here was a 11 by 17 is a benchmark of other cities and how they use their programs. Topeka's at the top there. Lot of information on here. I won't, I'll try, two key takeaways here is there clearly is a variety of how to do this program in other cities, but the norm is rebates are five to 10 years. We're clearly within that. Our program is a 10-year rebate. We also give back 95% of that rebate, much like other cities. So we're clearly in the norm there. The one norm we're not probably in is the far right column or the next to, the next to last column on the right side, time limit to apply. Most cities, as you go down here, are requiring their applications to be at the time of construction or prior to the building permit. We allow up to a year to apply after the building permit with, under certain conditions. So those are just the two things I just wanted to point out on there, but feel free to use that in helping you understand. If there's any questions I can help with beyond that, I'd be more than happy to.
And I think the interesting thing, we give the greatest incentive to the intensive care areas and then to at-risk. However, it's up to developers, they choose where to develop, even though, you know, we hope they are in these areas, but they have the right to, in any of the areas, any part of the city.
Correct.
As long as it's in with our, as long as within the area here.
Yeah, those red areas, those are our highest rebates that we give back. 10 years, 95%. The pink areas and all the other areas would be 10 years, but only 95% for the first five years, and then 50% for the five years. Yes, we hope this is a but-for program, meaning but for the incentives, these developments would not happen. And so that is, that's exactly how we want to keep it structured, but we can't force anyone to develop where they don't want to.
Right. Thank you. I think this is helpful, the interesting information. Questions? Councilman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of concerned with, we want the approval in April, and we used to do it in October, right? Or it has to be done by October?
Sorry.
Go ahead.
That's where we ultimately ended up going to, and it was, in the last several times, it was noted that that's a little late. There are developments that are depending on this program to know it's there next year. And so some intention was to bring it forth sooner this year and to make sure we have plenty of time so people know, yes, the program may be around next year.
And regarding the health map, I remember there was one meeting that we changed it, and that meeting took Belmont out. Is that correct? And during that meeting, when we changed the boundaries, we were told that it wouldn't affect anybody, but it did affect Belmont. So it's kind of hard to, I mean, I want the health map too, but I also want to know that it's not going to take out some of our low to moderate income. On our way out, you had mentioned to me that you quoted me wrong when you said Belmont was out, and then you quoted and said Belmont should be in on our way out when we were talking about the boundaries. Correct?
Councilman Ortiz, the Belmont section that was brought up last time was in the program up until 2013. So starting in 2013, the decision at that time and previous times was to focus on the at-risk. It was not an at-risk neighborhood anymore, and so that's why it was dropped out in 2012, 2013, when it was renewed. So if we want to, if we want to look at, examine, that was one of the points that, I don't know if I made, is, so when the, so if you want to put in outpatient areas, for instance, into the program, that's fine, but we, obviously, we don't have, there's probably no less than 13 neighborhoods that are outside of the current boundary that had their health change one way or the other. And so... And so, so we don't want to be arbitrary about adding one or two, or taking out one or two. That's why we want to be a little more comprehensive when we do this and do it right. It's add 'em all, let's add, based on the data, based on the health, or take out the ones that don't, that aren't at risk or intensive care anymore. Creates a lot of confusion when you change the health map in the middle of the stream, which is what happened, and I think it's caused a lot of confusion. We want to eliminate that. So I think all things would be on the table, so to speak, when we come back next year to look at, okay, what does the boundary need to look like based on that new health map information? Do you want to include outpatient areas? Do you want to have some sort of smaller type of rebate for those areas, less than the at-risk or intensive care? Or do you want them all to be the same? So those are the questions we could answer much more intelligently when we have the most recent data with the health map. And unfortunately, yeah, changing it midstream creates confusion, creates some unfairness, and that's, we don't want that.
We sure don't. And one of the things that I took away from our conversation walking out of here was that you said you misspoke and Belmont should be in, is that correct?
I don't recall what the context was, whether it was in, I know it was out. You were trying to convince me it was in.
No, I was trying to convince you that it should be in.
Okay. Now, that's, it certainly is not in. It was in, as I said, previous to 2013. So should it be in? I think that's the question, I think should that and other outpatient neighborhoods be in, is the question. That's a policy decision to come back with, to you.
Well, that's not how I recollected our conversation, but I think we need more time to work, to work on this so that we all understand this before we start shifting everything around. And I think April's too soon. And yes, I've had some calls, and yes, I'd like to see it go to committee so we can study it a little bit more. And we all can understand what the health map really says, because it has been changed in midstream. And I would like all that back documentation to be brought to committee in that we study this. So I would like to make a motion that this go to the Economic and Development. I think that would be the best. And I don't care what committee it goes to, I just, I think we really need to look at this, because there's been a lot of misunderstanding, a lot of things said Belmont should be in, and not just Belmont, but any of our intensive care areas. And so that we all get a good grip and a good understanding on this. So I'd like to see it go to, I'll put it in Economic and Development. I'll start there, and I'll accept the challenge.
All right. Councilman Ortiz has moved that this, the resolution be referred to the, you agree that it's probably the most appropriate committee for, because, you know, just to make sure we place it where it would be mishandled?
Mr. Mayor, yes. If it were to go to committee, I think that's the most appropriate. Obviously, from a staff perspective, we feel comfortable moving ahead with a public hearing and then breaking it down in better detail after the new health map comes out next year.
All right, okay. And move to places and refer this to the Economic Development Committee. Is there a second? Councilman, clear seconds. Is there discussion on referring this to the committee? Councilman Hiller.
I think we have a couple of different procedural things going on, so I'm fine with this going to committee. I haven't had a chance to make my comments on it yet, but I think that if we, if what we need is a year, or six or eight months, to get better inside what's going on and come up with some recommendations, if we tie that in with, the proposal that the staff has made is that we go ahead and extend this as-is for a year to give ourselves time to really, to get that neighborhood health map updated, I would argue to look at any other aspects. And the one I'll talk about is that Mrs. Peebler, when she talked before, said, you know, maybe there's, I think, talked A, about there having been some loans in Belmont before, but I don't see any on this map, and B, that maybe we needed to do some marketing. And when I look at the difference between how many loans we made at all, in the first period of 2007 to 2012, and then in the last four years, there have been hardly any single-family homes anywhere in town. And I'm guessing that the, you can count about four of them, that some of those are in the infill houses that the city built itself. So I'm guessing that people just don't know about it. And with our focus on, with our long-range land use plan, focusing internally and wanting to strategize how to incentivize infill housing and redevelopment in our neighborhoods, I think it's a bigger issue than just, just what the zone is, because we're not using it. It wasn't intended just for developers. Certainly, developers and big projects were encouraged, but I asked Bill to provide these maps, and I'm really glad that I did, because I think they tell a lot. You know, the issue is, do people know it's there? Are they using it? You know, no matter what neighborhood it is, are they using it? And so I would think that when it goes to committee, that it should not just be about the neighborhood health map, which is premature right now, but to talk about how this could and should be used, and how to market it and get it out. So I don't know if that whole discussion nonetheless should start now, or should wait until that health map is ready and we're ready to look at the whole thing. If there was a way that we focused on promoting, understanding and promoting this between this year and next year, to see how we could optimize the use of it, I think that would be a better assignment than being ahead of the time on the health map.
So are you speaking in favor of referring it to the committee?
Well, not, not referring this resolution to the committee, because I think we should go ahead and extend for a year. So, yes, I think it would be good to put it in committee, but not to defer this resolution on the hearing.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Councilman Ortiz.
Well, and the reason why I say that, and I understand that staff has worked hard, and this is their recommendation, but at the end of the day, we are the body that votes on this, and I don't want to vote on something that I missed, and that's what I feel. If this, if this map has changed in midstream, I think we all need to be clear of that. I don't want to vote on something and put something in that doesn't get in, or that shouldn't be in. I want to make sure that I'm very clear, and at this point, I don't think any of us are. So I appreciate staff's recommendation, but I've been told several different things, and I think we need to get a clear understanding. I'm not going to rush this, and it doesn't, and, you know, there's still time, because we've always done it in April. And I don't know what developers want to get out there and develop, because I haven't been told. All I've been told is half the story, that they want to get out there. So unless somebody tells me otherwise, I'd like to see it go to committee so we get a clear understanding of the map, that, you know, it was quoted in one of our minutes that nothing would change. Well, something did change when we changed those boundaries. Belmont was out. That's just one, that's just one of the things, after being told that. So I want a clear understanding of what they are. I can look at the rest of that later, but I think we need to really look at it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes.
If I could, the resolution just sets a public hearing to solicit public comment about continuing the program for another year. This does not adopt the plan. So there'd be the public hearing, and then the next step would be an ordinance to continue the plan for another year. And at that point, after you hear from the public, you may want to refer it to committee. But at this point, we're just setting a hearing, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
You're sure.
But Mary, if I send this to committee, doesn't that put it on hold until we can figure out what we want to do and, right? If it goes to committee, it goes to committee. We don't send anything. We don't, that's what I want to happen.
Okay.
But I appreciate you explaining that to me, but that's what I want it to happen, that we want to make sure that this is the way that we want to go.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there other discussion? Before we vote, we do have someone, public comment, Joanne Peebler.
My name is Joanne Peebler. I live in East Topeka, and I live in the Belmont neighborhood. And I'm here tonight, I'm a little bit of a disadvantage. I don't know what was passed out to you just tonight from the planning department, so forgive me if I'm overstepping boundaries anywhere. But I wanted to try to bring out three points about the revitalization plan. First of all, I want to talk to you somewhat about the Belmont neighborhood, the fact that we were in the revitalization from the get-go, because at that time, we were delegated on our census block from the federal government. We didn't have a neighborhood health map at the time it was started. And so until your last ordinance was adopted, we were in that. And I want to talk a little bit about the advantages we had in our neighborhood, and now the disadvantages that we've had since you folks voted us out of the revitalization. I don't think you realize what you did, but you did. Second point I want to make is that it is very early in the year to have this discussion. Ordinarily, these are in October. I'd like to be able to send it to a committee, not necessarily a city council committee, but a committee of all of the people that are involved in revitalization, including some of the big corporations that have reaped tremendous financial advantage under the current ordinance. And thirdly, I'd like to talk a little bit about the property tax that our entities are losing, the fiscal. According to the note I got, there's no fiscal advantage or disadvantage, but I would argue that there is a fiscal disadvantage to this. And the reason is that the corporations that have benefited so largely from this last ordinance, such as Walmart and Kroger, are disproportionately taking back a big share, 90% of the taxes that they'll pay for property tax for the next 10 years. And that will adversely affect all of those entities that are listed at the bottom of your real estate tax notice, such as 501, our transit authority, our airport, our library, our Washburn University. All of those entities rely on property tax. And now it's being diverted to the larger corporations. So I'm asking that you do send this to a committee, not necessarily a city council committee, but a committee of these entities that are adversely affected or advantageally affected, like the big corporations, that they have an input into this, that we don't send it to a public hearing. It's been my experience that a public hearing doesn't always reach the people, the notice does not always reach the people that are affected. So that's my points, and I'll be glad to elaborate on these if you want me to. My time is just about up, but I do have a lot to talk about, especially about my neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
So may I have a little bit more time?
Your time hasn't expired, is it?
I've got seven seconds.
All right. Your time has expired. Is there interest in providing additional time? Councilwoman Ortiz moves to, about, how much time would you?
I don't know. I'll take the time that you give me, whether it's three minutes or whatever.
She said three minutes.
Okay.
Councilman Emerson, seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have six yes.
Okay, you have an additional three minutes.
Thank you. As I said, Belmont neighborhood is a little neighborhood of three blocks by four blocks directly north across Sixth Street from Payless U Corporation. That neighborhood is a part of the East End Neighborhood Improvement Association, and probably comprises about 25% of the housing stock. This little neighborhood, like I said, has always been in the revitalization area until the last ordinance was passed. And so we were effectively knocked out. We were not notified that we were going to be eliminated, or we would have been at the public hearing. Near as I can tell from the council's meetings of October 23rd, you folks were not notified that we were going to be eliminated. You were notified of the additional area to the western part of the city that was going to be included, but we didn't know, and you didn't know. But you unanimously voted to get us out. In fact, there are four of you that voted that way that are here. Three of you, well, Mr. Harmon is not here, but three of you voted that are still council people, and one of you voted that's now your mayor, to eliminate us. My point is that you don't get all the information that you need from your city employees. I don't think you ever would have done this, and we certainly would have been here to ask you not to eliminate us. If this is continued for another year, we're going to lose people that are interested in building in our community, one of those being Habitat for Humanity. They have a donation from our neighborhood, and they'd like to build a cluster of homes. And they could do that in our neighborhood. 59 seconds. But they would be doing their clients a tremendous disservice by building in a neighborhood that does not have revitalization. And so I think it would be a deal breaker for them. It would be a wonderful thing for our neighborhood to have a cluster of Habitat Homes, hopefully that they could join with West Star and have those homes be solar. West Star is very interested in getting solar homes in Topeka. It would be right across, right on Sixth Street, very visible, a wonderful thing, but it can't happen until we have a different ordinance. So my plea to you tonight is to don't send this for public hearing, but instead send it to some kind of a committee that will look into it a lot deeper and come up with some decisions. I wish I could have time.
Your time has expired, so.
My second and third point.
Just, I'm sorry. So you want to conclude your remarks, or do you want to request additional time?
Do you want to hear my second and third point that I was going to bring up, or not?
You're requesting some additional time, correct?
I would request more time.
All right.
We have another three minutes, please.
Councilwoman Hiller, seconds. Provide additional three minutes and a discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have five yes, everybody no.
You have an additional three minutes.
My point here on the second thing is that it is so early in the year to be discussing this. Ordinarily, it is done in October. I'm sorry. Am I, is this my time?
I'm sorry. Do we need six votes for that?
Well, yes, you do need six votes.
We need six votes. So the motion did not pass to extend your time. We have to have six votes. It did not pass.
Even though it was the majority of the people here?
That's correct. All right, we have to have six votes to take action.
How terribly sad.
It's not, it's not a majority of those present, but it's six votes.
I have also signed up to speak at public comments.
So you'll have an opportunity then.
Maybe I can get a little bit of this in at that time.
That's right. You can finish at that time.
Please vote to send it to a committee.
Okay. Mr. Feiner, I have a question. When we voted several years ago, I think prior to that, the map included the outpatient areas. And then the decision or the recommendation is that we only include the at-risk and intensive care areas. And in that case, the Belmont area was outpatient, so when we made that decision, then they were not included. Is that, is that how this happened?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, yes. The area shrunk a little bit. It also, it expanded some areas. It shrunk in some other areas, and we had showed on the map, you know, the old area, the new area, to form around what was the at-risk areas.
So, but we only included at-risk and intensive care? Or were there some other? Or were there some other?
There are.
There are some outpatient areas that also were included.
There were. For instance, I think I mentioned last time, we didn't want to split neighborhoods. So if you had at-risk in the neighborhood, I think Highland Park is one of those that has some outpatient. Even High Crest, east of Adams, was all outpatient at the time. That was not included. A piece that was included that was healthy, which really isn't a neighborhood, was the old state hospital grounds, and that was a redevelopment area, something that, and that's another thing, something that's mentioned about, we do have to go to 501 County and all the other taxing entities. And so we have to hear from them after you have put this in place. So I think at that time, there was a big push when we went to them to shrink the area. They didn't want to see it expand. In fact, just target those areas that were the highest need. So that's, and then, so we had to come back to you and amend that, and that's why it took so long all the way to the end of the year. So there was a process definitely that played out that whole year, which is why we started earlier.
Okay. And what I just, I don't think we were voting to exclude neighborhoods, but there was a bigger process that we went through, and that's, and it did happen in some cases by that decision.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Hiller, did you, and then Claire?
Yeah, thank you. I had two things, and one of them has slipped a little bit, but Bill, we've had a suggestion from Mrs. Peebler that rather than just put it in a council committee, that we have a bigger process to really kind of tear this apart and study it prior to coming back for any sort of vote, I guess. What's your reaction to that?
Councilwoman Hiller, that's, we could do sort of what we do when we shop this around to the other taxing entities, is it ends up becoming a plan by committee. It is, the public hearings really help to get the word out, so we can hear from individuals who are in neighborhoods or who have development interests. And so, you know, putting something like that together, I think that's fair. I don't know how we end up starting to go about that necessarily, but we could come up with something.
I recall, for instance, when you were working on the sign ordinance, that you got together a group of stakeholders to really get heads together, and it was very productive. And I think her suggestion, particularly with some of the thoughts that had come up before that I mentioned earlier, wanting to talk about how we market, not just what the territory is, who we're really, who we really are wanting to engage in using this, and how effectively we've been able to engage them so far. I think of even the Citizens Advisory Council, really, representatives of all the neighborhoods, as being a group who might be interested in having some conversation and input. And I'm asking that because that's bigger than just putting it into the ECD committee, and it might be really helpful if we wanted to look big picture at this process, to have those kinds of conversations first.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's, we can't, there's a lot that goes into this program. It's been, it's been kind of evolving or devolving as well over the last 23 years, to go back in front of some of the residents and the neighborhood stakeholders to kind of break this down, say, this is how it's working now, this is where it's at, you know, what do you think? Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's not a bad, it's not a bad idea.
But I also see it driving the long discussed conversations that, with, for instance, the associate general contractors or the home builders, about what it would take, what kinds of tools we already have, and if we need others, what they might be to really attract and grow the redevelopment in our neighborhoods.
Yeah, our issue is timing.
Understood.
That's all this really is. We're going to do all that. That's going to happen. Do we want to change everything? It's like paving a road this year, knowing we're going to come back next year and tear it up for the waterline. You know, you don't really want to do that. We want to, we want to do the waterline and the street repair all at one time.
So if I could finish then, if we, could you lay out what we might expect if we went forward with the, briefly a calendar between now and next October?
Sure.
What that might look like?
Under this, under this recommendation?
Well, if we went with the recommendation to have a public hearing in May and extend this in October, you already, or vote shortly after that then to extend this for a year, what we have. You already said that we could, you said at the beginning of this meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, that if there was a property, for instance, this Habitat proposal in this, in Belmont, they could apply and it could be approved, even though Belmont's not in the area?
It has to be an existing structure that's being rehanded.
Oh, not a new one. All right, so they need to be in for that Habitat thing to occur. All right. Well, if we, if we did the hearing in May, how would you see that input process calendar out between now and next year?
Well, I think, I guess, the way we were, the road we were going down was to take, we need direction from this body to then go to the other taxing entities and say, hey, the city wants to do this. What do you all think? And so you have, you have a series of public hearings, discussions, just like what we're having here in front of those other taxing entities. So we would go to 501, we would go to Semin, we would go to the county, which are arguably the, those are the large taxing entities. We'll go to the airport, we'll go to transit, we'll go to Washburn. And those are a series of public hearings that every, you know, that we will collect information and input on, on the program, but we can't, until we kind of know where we're going, where the city's going, we don't, we didn't want to, we wouldn't want to do that. So that's how we, if this passes for another year, then you still have to go to those bodies in this summer, this fall, and get their approval and an interlocal agreement. And then you have heard from a lot of people, you've heard from, you know, this has been out there, and then you can begin to, then you can begin to form that committee, if you will, of the changes, of leading into next year when you have new health data and you, and you put that marketing, you put the, you know, if it's a rebate percentage, we need to be focusing more on neighborhoods. How do we do that? I think there's a challenge with that. These aren't working for the typical home improvement projects. They don't. But if we wanted, how would that work if we wanted to do that? Those are all questions we need time to figure out. So this would give us some time to do that before we come back to you again next year, and then we can say, okay, here's what we heard after this year has gone by. Here's what we've heard after we've been out to the community. And propose changes at that point.
Okay. Councilwoman Claire?
Since this was about setting a public date, or a public hearing date, I think, I can only see that helping, like you say, with the information, it's going to get more people to, you know, agree with Ms. Peebler, you know, and give their opinions, or vice versa. It only gives us more information. If we send it to committee and then we have a hearing, then we have all that information from the hearing that we then have to put into, that we may have to go back to committee. I just think we need to set the hearing, get all the information we can, and then work with.
So you're speaking in opposition to referring it to the committee? All right. Other questions? We have a motion in a second to refer this resolution to the Economic Development Committee. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have three yes and three no. Hiller, Claire, and Daley Eastlove, voted no.
Three having voted no, the motion to refer is defeated. So we have back before us the resolution as written on the Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, establishing a hearing date. At your pleasure, Councilwoman Hiller.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved to approve. Is there a second? Councilwoman Hiller, seconds. Any discussion?
I would like to support what Councilwoman Claire said. I think that that was really good. If, if in the intervening time between now and May 9th, we could, staff can make a concerted effort to get the word out to parties who might be interested to either meet on their own, or meet with staff, or otherwise come to the hearing and bring their thoughts. I think that would be fine. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Just as a point of clarification, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Hiller, the public hearing date established by the resolution is April 4th.
That's right.
Oh.
But that doesn't negate your bigger point and the point raised by Councilwoman Ortiz.
The T bit is May. The previous one we did, this one is April, and as stated in here, is April 4th. Councilman Emerson?
I guess, would there be a problem moving it back to May? I mean, you're talking, that's in like two weeks from now, and people are out of town for spring break probably, or maybe. You have high school seniors, yes, you are, next week. What, Mr. Feinder, would that's?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager. Sorry, you want to speak to that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Emerson, obviously, it's the will of the body, of course, but I don't think we would have any issues with pushing that back. You know, as Mr. Feinder has noted, we do have to get in front of those other governing bodies to get their input, and this process will essentially be repeated three more times, but, or potentially more, but pushing it back another week or two, or three, won't impact us.
So do you wish to defer the resolution?
Not to defer the resolution, but to just to change the date, amend, to change the date of the public hearing.
All right.
So I guess I would make a motion to amend this resolution to set the public hearing date for?
The last meeting in April of that.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
That would be 17? I'm just.
I'm not sure what the date is.
The 18th of the fourth.
All right. So we have a motion to change the hearing date to the third Tuesday in April. Is there a second? Councilman Claire, seconds. Any discussion? Are we clear on what we're doing? Okay.
It's to amend the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the resolution, and then we'll have to vote on the resolution.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion on changing the date of the hearing? If not, all those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
We have five yes, Ms. Ortiz voting no.
Okay, the motion is defeated. We have before us the resolution as proposed. I'd say, are there other options, since there are only six persons here, that we defer the?
Well, you could, someone could make a motion to defer it till next week, or, because you don't, you need six votes to pass any.
We need six votes, so I don't think we're going to get six votes in favor of an item. So perhaps we just defer action until next week. Yeah, there will be at least two more here next week. As far as we know, they'll be gone. I know of only two that will be gone next week. That would be, there would be then eight persons here.
Do you have to vote to defer them?
Is there a motion? Is there a motion to defer action on this? Councilman Claire, until?
Motion to defer until next council meeting on the 20th.
All right. Twenty, twenty?
Twenty.
Okay, motion to defer action on this resolution until the next meeting. Is there a, is there a second?
Sure.
Okay. Councilman Emerson, seconds. We have a motion in a second to defer action until, oh, for one week.
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Emerson and Hiller, and the mayor.
We have five yes, Ms. Ortiz voting no.
One voting no, the resolution does not pass.
Call the question. Let's vote.
Well, there is, we do not have a motion on the floor on the resolution as written.
We do have a motion to vote on the resolution.
Is that?
We need to vote on it. Yeah. A motion to pass the resolution.
Yep.
I think we've amended it.
Right? And standard of the original one.
Let me look here.
Mr. Mayor, let's let the clerk check that.
I think it was amended. There is a motion to approve.
There was a motion to approve as printed. All right, we have a motion before.
It was not voted on.
Okay, we have motion and a second to vote on the resolution we have before us. Councilwoman East?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, because there's been so many amendments, should we vote right now? What we're voting for is to extend for a year so that we could have community engagement sessions.
No. We're just voting like having a hearing.
We're setting a hearing date.
Oh, we're setting the hearing?
Yes.
We're setting a hearing.
All right. All right.
All right. All together, a motion is second to approve the resolution which sets the hearing date for April 4th. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
I'm sorry, hold on just a minute here.
All right.
Okay, now we can start.
Okay, now vote.
Okay, we have Hiller, Claire, and Ortiz.
Okay.
Did you clear the board?
I think it wasn't ready when we voted the first time.
We have five yes, Ms. Ortiz voting no.
With no, the motion does not pass. So that, we will move on.
Have to move on, yes.
We'll move on at this point. That completes the action items this evening, folks. We will now go to the non-action items, discussion items. First is a discussion on CIP. The clerk would read.
It's discussion of the proposed 2018 to 2027 capital improvements plan and 2018 to 2020 capital improvement budget.
Mr. Inland, City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. As we talked about last week, this is the start of our March Madness, the start of our CIP process. We are coinciding actually with some of the other games that are going on right now, but we are going to hear from Nikki Lee, and tonight she's going to give an overview of what our CIP entails this year. And then we will have Bob Sample, Director of Utilities, come up, and he will give a presentation. We're beginning this year with utilities. Traditionally, we've started with streets and other geo-bonded projects, but this year we're starting with utilities. Before I turn it over to either one of them, we do have a number of folks in the audience here in a supporting role for the utilities presentation, so with your permission, I'd like to have them stand, and I'll introduce who's here, or maybe they could just wave. And I'll try to kind of do it by row here. In the second row, we have Michelle Nieswander, who is our wastewater engineer, Nicole Malott, who's our business services manager for utility, Sylvia Davis, who's WPC general manager. Okay, maybe stand up, so they can see you.
This is the second row.
Let's see, I see Kelly Ryan, who is our stormwater levee engineer. Paul Bodnar is our water engineer. Stand up, Paul. Stephen Miller is our stormwater engineer. Zach Stube is our, is an engineering, engineer in training, EIT. It's a program we started with in the last two years that we're pretty proud of. And then I see Kasim Azir in the back. He is also an EIT for us.
Okay, thank you.
I think that covers the group. Thank you. And with no further ado, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lee.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. I will give a brief overview of the capital improvement plan process and then we will turn it over to, as was previously said, to discuss some of the more specific projects. What we've been doing that hopefully has worked pretty well the last couple of years is split up the types of projects per night. That way to give adequate attention to the different types of projects. And as we presented, tonight, we are starting with utilities. Traditionally, we've done utilities last. This year, we're deciding to try it first and kind of see how that conversation goes and flows differently. So just a few opening remarks. The Capital Improvement Plan book is available on our website as of 6:00 PM tonight, so it is available for everybody to have access to. Worked a minute ago. You just be my clicker. I only have about five slides and then Bob will step up. Okay. So if you turn, you all have a handout in front of you to slide two there, an overview of the process. As was approved by the updated capital improvement plan policy by this governing body in the fall, there is now is presented 10 years of projects versus five. That's really great for our future planning and really is the best practice. We, as always, approve the capital improvement plan projects before the annual operating budget. That way, the budget can reflect all of the projects that have been approved. Again, this contains a three-year capital improvement budget, so what that is, is the first three years of the 10 years of projects that are actually receiving authorization to go ahead and start on those three years of projects. And one really important enhancement to focus on this year is an increased public engagement. Traditionally, the CIP, it's been such a big topic. It's something that lasts a long portion of the year. It's kind of a hard thing to tackle as far as public engagement, but this year, we've done more than we really ever had before. We had an open house at the library that was very well-attended and a bus tour that was open to neighborhood leaders, overall exposure to over 125 people, so we're very proud of that. And we will, after tonight, continue to promote the CIP on all of our online websites. Thank you, Alan. And just a few slides focusing on kind of an overview of the CIP. And again, all of this information plus more is available in the document. We have multiple funding sources in our capital improvement plan. The biggest one, and part of the reason for starting up tonight, would be from our utility funds, whether it be bond or cash from all of our utilities. We also separate our CIP per the policy by type of projects. So we have different buckets of projects and of course, the biggest one being utilities and the next biggest being our streets. And finally, a debt overview. If you go ahead to the next one here. This is an enhancement that we continue to build upon in all of our documents. If you turn to page six, what you see there and also again is available plus more within our CIP policy would be a combined utilities pro forma. So basically, that's our five-year forecast. One very important note that Bob will emphasize before he comes up here is that a very important decision before going into the CIP process was what to reflect for future rates in our utility funds. The one right before this, please, thank you. So we made a decision to reflect in this capital improvement plan an assumption for rate increases that reflects similar rate increases as was adopted last year for 2015, 2016, 2017. We're not at this point presuming that these rates will happen. We're not even saying that this is necessarily what will be proposed, but simply, we needed something for future planning purposes plugged into our forecast so we can go ahead and get authority and start planning on some of these projects. That is a continued conversation. That will happen over multiple meetings, multiple conversations, lots of engagement. But again, just for planning purposes, needed to reflect something in the capital improvement plan. And this also reflects what we've done in prior years when same situation, we haven't had our rates yet, but we've needed to go ahead with our plan. Okay, so one more for me. One thing that we also want to emphasize is how any current plan would affect our overall debt load. So in the most recent debt policy that was approved by this body last fall, there was a minimum number of days cash available and also cash ratio of revenue that was approved in that plan. And that pretty much required that there be at least 185 days of operating cash. So that means that in your utilities, if tomorrow you stopped getting revenue, that you could operate for at least 185 days. That's a bare minimum. So as you can see on this slide, this capital improvement plan with the revenue assumption would meet that target plus some. And then also, there's a minimum debt service coverage that in all of our bond covenants, when we go out for financing, we're required to have a certain percentage of revenue over debt. And that's 1.25, which again is reflected in this document. So next steps, sorry, one more slide on page eight and then Bob will step up and get into some more detail. We will continue the CIP discussion on April 4th. We'll be talking more about streets, on general obligation projects, and then all other funding sources with the intent of April 11th to make a motion on the CIP as presented. So with that, just an overview of the process and then we'll start getting into some project details.
Are there any questions, comments for Ms. Lee? No. Yes, Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. Just back to the master chart with all the rate increases in it. In big picture, we've talked before about how enormous our utility infrastructure needs are. With that five to 10-year plan and that level of rate increases, would we be making progress or holding water or still losing ground?
So if you don't mind, you're one step ahead. Actually, on slide 17, that Bob will get into, it reflects exactly what this would fund and also at the same time, what this still wouldn't fund. So that is an important part of the conversation. No matter what you assume, it's still important to pay attention to what would be outstanding even with those assumptions. So he'll dive into more detail on that, at least in the five-year outlook. And in addition, in the book, very back page is we've got an unfunded document that you can see a grand total of, even with this being said, all the projects that aren't currently showing as being funded.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're ready to face two. Bob Sample.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. I'm honored to lead the CIP discussion. We got the CIP discussion for utilities. So if you would allow me to, I'd like to just take a minute and talk about utilities and what we do. So, I've got a couple of samples here for you. Can you all see what I brought? Kind of start with the water utility first. So what we do at the water utility, we actually borrow water from our river. We can borrow that water, and as you can see, this would be from, a sample from the river. We clean it and prepare it for human consumption. And then we distribute it out to homes and businesses through approximately 900 miles of water main with the help of seven pump stations and nine storage tanks. That point then kind of ends the water utility. But then the wastewater utility begins. So as we use that water, we put it down the drain, then wastewater utility starts collecting all of that water from around the city. We transport it with the help of pump stations and the final destination is one of the two city-owned wastewater treatment plants. When it makes its way to the wastewater treatment plant, then we clean that water, disinfect it, and then we discharge it and we give it back to the river from what we borrowed. And as you can see, this is a sample of the affluent from the Oakland wastewater treatment plant. So I think it's always important that when we borrow something, we give it back in as good a shape or better than we borrowed it from. So kind of in a nutshell, that's, that is, that's what we do with utilities. There is one other utility, though, one other part to it, and that is our stormwater. So when it rains and as soon as that water hits the ground in our community, we have a responsibility to make sure that the infrastructure that manages that stormwater is in condition that it'll move that water away into a receiving stream and prevent flooding, localize flooding. But there's also another piece of that, and that is the water quality piece. Back in 1975, when I got in the business, stormwater was all about just taking the water and getting it away before, before we have streets flooding. But now, there's a water quality piece to that where we have to be concerned about the water quality before we discharge that into a creek. So, there you go. That's in a nutshell. I also would like to thank the city, the utility staff who showed up tonight in support of our capital improvement plan. It's a pleasure working with all of them. So if it's all right with you, I'll highlight seven projects and talk through them a little bit. We can get started with the wastewater, wastewater lining and replacement program. This program replaces sewer lines that have, that are aging and are in bad shape and need to be replaced. Another part to that is this new lining program that we're starting, and this is really exciting. We're actually focusing on residential neighborhoods where we're going to go in and find that those sewer lines that aren't so bad that they need to be replaced, but we can actually go in and line those sewer lines. And I've actually, it's a very interesting process. I've got another show and tell, if you'll allow me to show you on how a lining process works. So once we've found a sewer line that we can line, lining process starts by putting in the sock into that sewer line. Understand, there's no excavation with this. So at that point in time, then resin is injected into this, into this sock while it's inside that sewer line. And then they actually pull this sock, just like you were pulling a sock out of the dryer, inside out. And the resin then is on the outside. And then, then comes the heat process where they'll inject either steam or hot water. And then that causes this lining, the sock lining, to cure. And what it leaves is this, is just like a brand-new pipe, PVC pipe. As you can see, the inside of this, this is what, this is how it cures. Be okay if I pass that around?
It hasn't been disinfected.
And I'll start the sock. Take a closer look. Okay, again, in 2007, this year, right now, we're going to focus on a couple of neighborhoods, residential areas. One of them being the one that's showing up on the screen, which would be north of 37th Street from Adams to Kansas Avenue.
Where do you need it? This?
You need it to go.
You need to go where?
Need to go the next line.
Oh, you click the arrow.
Okay. Okay, next project, Grant Jefferson wastewater pump station. If you can see on the front of the building, you'll see where it says 1927. Obviously, we replaced pumps over the years, but that's the, that is the original building for this pump station. It's a $10.3 million project. The Grant Jefferson pump station collects wastewater from the North to Pika area and then pumps it over to the Oakland wastewater treatment plant. So well due for rehab. Okay, the Oakland wastewater treatment plant, ultraviolet disinfection expansion. If you look at the very top slide, you will see ultraviolet lights that are submerged into the affluent at the Oakland wastewater treatment plant. And the purpose for this is that it kills bacteria before we discharge it into the, into the river. This, this water right here has been disinfected. And it actually has that green glow to it, too. As if you're standing right over this process, you'll see that green glow. And it's, and it's that UV light that actually kills the bacteria. At the bottom picture, you'll see the arm that's up, raised up, and you'll see those UV bulbs in a series there so that they can be worked on. And the reason we need this project is, number one, because of all the good work we did in the combined sewer overflow cleaning of the interceptors earlier, over the last year and a half, where we took out tons of debris from the Adams interceptor and the Eastside interceptor. That was good because that increased the capacity of the interceptors. What that means then is that we'll be able to handle more wet weather flow, but then what that means is that the Oakland wastewater treatment plant will need to be able to treat that wet weather flow and have more disinfection capacity to treat. So. Okay, storm conveyance system rehab program. This program does rehabilitation on our stormwater conveyance systems. If you look at, there's several types of conveyance systems that transports stormwater. The very upper-left picture is a ditch. Actually, ditches are a conveyance system for stormwaters. Approximately 140 miles of ditches that we maintain in the city of Topeka. The bottom picture, I believe that's Ward Martin Creek. Creeks are also conveyance systems. In that picture, you'll see the riprap needs restored. Also, though, there's 179 miles of conduit, stormwater conduit underneath Topeka also that transports stormwater. And when you think about it, you stop and think about it, we've got 900 miles of water line, 900 miles of wastewater sewer main, and then you add almost 200 more miles, actually, 400 more miles of stormwater conduit underground. We've got about 2,200 miles of infrastructure for utilities to maintain. Trouble?
No, you have to click the arrow, actually.
Okay. Okay. Water main replacement program, $17.5 million over five years. Again, just replacement of water mains. Over 90% of this money is spent and associated with half-cent sales tax in street projects. Same way with the conveyance, stormwater conveyance system program. East High Service Pump Station at the water plant. We've talked a lot about the Lane Pump Station, which is the major pump station supplying water to the city of Topeka. That project is coming to an end this year. And this is a small, very small pump station located at the water plant that serves as, is a backup for that Lane Pump Station and also will assist with peak demand dollars. The picture you see at the upper left is a battery pack that supplies backup power for the control system for that pump station. And then, as you can see, it was built in 1968. So certainly much more modern than the 1927 wastewater pump station that we've seen earlier. This project will include the replacement of the motor control system along with the electrical switchgear. And electrical switchgear is nothing more than just a giant breaker, breaker like you would see at your home, and its purpose is to protect the electrical equipment. see at your home, and its purpose is to protect the electrical equipment. Okay, and then last project I'd like to highlight is the 2 million gallon west elevated tank Indian on Indian Hills Road. This project will consist of construction of an elevated storage tank on Indian Hills Road to provide the adequate domestic and fire protection, domestic service and fire protection. This picture that you're looking at is a picture of the Kirkland Tower out by Walmart on South Topeka. It's a 3 million gallon tank. So just to try to put this in perspective, the tank that we'll be building out on Indian Hills Road will be about 2/3 of the size of this. And talk a little bit about the funding and the projects. If you look at the very top box, and as Nikki talked about, this assumes a rate increase. That rate increase that we, this assumption that we made was a 6%, 5%, 5% reoccurring starting in 2018. We're not saying that we will need that rate increase. We're not ready for that rate discussion. We'll need to have utility rate discussion later in the year. But as, with this rate assumption, as you can see, over five years, we'll do over $206 million worth of projects for utilities. But it does still leave $112.5 million of unfunded projects. And the bottom box assumes that there's no rate increase. We'd be able to do $84.5 million worth of projects, and then that unfunded amount goes up to $234 million. Any, I guess, am I at a point where I'm willing to take any questions?
So actually, I think a couple of things. That I think first is important to realize, that actually, we spend more, a bigger part of the CIP is on utilities than it is on streets.
Yes.
But everybody's interested in streets.
Yeah.
Because we all are experts. We drive on them every day, but utilities is sort of something we don't see. And so I think it's important to look at it in that manner.
I agree. And we have, again, just thinking back, the amount of water line, sewer line, stormwater line underneath the city of Topeka that we can't even, that we can't see is very important. Where on streets, when we get in our car, we can certainly experience the condition.
Right.
If we were able to do that same thing with these water lines that are invisible, we'd see that we still have the same needs in that area.
And I think on your, the funded and unfunded projects, and I think that's what Councilwoman Hiller is looking at, as into the CIP, we're looking at all the projects that need to be done in the next 10 years. And to do what we're saying here, the things we feel we ought to may require a utility rate increase. When we go to the CIP, we can adopt all these plans, and then if, whether or not we approve a utility rate increase will determine how many projects we do. Is that, and I don't know, Ashley, you want to speak on that? Is that sort of the way we want to talk about this?
So I agree completely with that. One thing is, is that that happens to some extent every year with the capital improvement plan, is that it's so early, you know, you're approving right now for projects that are going through 2020. So to some extent, this is an early project approval, but once we get to the time of project startings, we'll always evaluate whether, no matter what the funding source, whether we can still afford the project at that time. Is it still a funding priority? So as always, this is a plan. We're asking for approval, but we'll assess when the time comes whether or not it's still the appropriate thing to do financially. So I'd say, you know, no matter what you're looking at, there's always that step to make sure you can still afford it. It's just especially the case in this time where it's happening before the rates discussion. So that timing is a little bit different than in previous years. But you're always kind of giving that preapproval, and then it's always kind of contingent on longer-term funding needs and availabilities anyways.
And these amounts that were listed on each of these pages are really, for a project that could be over several years, so they wouldn't all be done in 2018?
The ones that I highlighted?
Yeah.
Yes, over a couple of years.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Other questions? Councilwoman clear?
These are just questions out of my own knowledge. So you said you had to treat the rainwater before, why?
How do you do that?
Why, how to get rid of?
Yeah, it's different from the wastewater where we have to actually physically treat everything. But we do have to have systems in place that address water quality. That could mean anything from education programs where we're getting education out there about oil and materials that shouldn't go in a storm drain, to actually building green infrastructure that has a water quality feature to it, that actually does clean the stormwater.
Do you do that now? Do you clean the stormwater?
Yes, we do have areas. We do have areas around town. Retention basins.
To help out, I think we have EPA standards, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, require us to only let water go back into the river if it meets certain standards, right?
So we have to clean the rain?
We have to clean the rain.
Well, a lot of the water, when it rains, a lot of the materials, the contaminants is picked up as it's transported.
Then my other question was about the pipe. The sock, well, the pipe disintegrate around it, and then we have like a new pipe?
No. No.
Then what's the purpose?
Well, the reason that we're going to line that is because that pipe is in bad shape. It's deteriorated. It could have cracks. It could have.
It's not a replacement for?
It's what?
It's not a replacement for?
It actually will serve as a replacement for that pipe. The old pipe will still stay in place, though.
Okay.
But you'll have that new PVC-like pipe inside it.
So what's the cost comparison between you put the sock in, you have that, or you put a new pipe?
You know, and I don't have those exact figures, but it's more cost-effective. I'm saying around 30% that we could save. We don't have to do any of the excavation, which, and that really, don't have to disrupt our citizens while we're making the process.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, I was just going to, on your first question, your first point, if you recall back to one of our budget discussions maybe two years ago, a key piece of our stormwater management program is street sweeping.
Yeah, I recall.
So I knew that might jive your memory, but that certainly keeping our streets clean keeps stuff out of our inlets and helps us manage that stormwater quality.
Okay, other questions? Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sample, it was good visiting with you last week. I learned a lot. Where on Indian Hills Road is the elevated water pipe going to be?
Around the 33rd 100 block. There's a little bit more detail on page 90 in your CIP book. There's actually a 750,000 gallon tank out there in that vicinity now. It's just not adequate to provide the storage we need.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have questions on, I have questions on some of the ones that you presented and some others from the book. For those of us that want to ask lots of questions, should we go on utilities to Mr. Sample? Should we go to Nikki? What do you want?
Depends on how many there are.
I'm not sure, so.
Well, I think you can ask them. Yeah, we're not really going into the book tonight. All the different, yeah, City Manager.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, I would suggest in addition, we've done one-on-ones, or we've offered to do one-on-ones, which I think we did with you. If you have additional questions, if you would submit those to Nikki so she can coordinate a Q and A that we can get out then to the entire body so we can get those answers to everyone.
I just wanted to double check now that we, I will share with you that having, you know, the idea of a 10-year plan sounded really good, but it was hard enough to look at a three-year book, and I think it was pretty darn overwhelming. I do have a more general overarching question. As you talked about the issue of approving this plan and then we would be approving any rates subsequent to that, what happens, the way, the process that we have set up right now is that when we approve this CIP, by virtue of doing it, we've approved the projects, and they're in motion, yet we haven't. If the rate increases aren't in place, those projects might not happen. And an advantage of doing them one at a time is, hey, you get to kind of wrap your hands around them, but B, you know, pass it unless you're really going to do it. Have you all thought ahead how we would accommodate? Do we have to cancel projects if we've approved them in the plan, but then something changes?
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, I missly addressed this a little bit in an earlier answer, but whether or not we have the funds, we're always evaluating projects to make sure we do. And so this really doesn't change much for us. It gives us the authority to start planning and to start looking ahead. But if we don't have the funds, whether it's because of a rate increase or any other contingency that might come up, we're not going to proceed with the project, whether it's related to rate increases or not.
Well, and of course, I go back too far with this process where you did the budget and then you approved the project when you were ready to start and you knew you had the money. So would we, though, I mean, because the projects would all be approved, I don't know that we've ever gone in and canceled one yet, but shouldn't we? I mean, have we thought about that?
So the only thing I would add is that this is part of the reason why we do an annual updated CIP. So let's say rates are finalized late fall, you know, winter, then it's 2019. At that point, we're already building the next year's CIP. So that CIP then will reflect exactly the rates that were passed. So every year when we update it, that allows us to kind of retool. I can tell you for a fact that we know exactly what projects in this document we can do with rates and what we can't do without rates. And we're all very conscientious stewards that nobody's starting anything before that decision is made. So we know exactly what in here we could proceed with and to what level and what we can. I mean, we have multiple scenarios of this CIP to reflect those different things. So that's how I would say we would answer that, would be that the next year's CIP would catch up on, you know, the latter nine years. The only year that we'd be off would be 2018. And I think as a matter of part of the rates discussion, that's part of what we would need to present to you all is what would be affected in that CIP by that decision.
Okay. Karen, any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the, your support that was here this evening. Council members, we are almost to the time when we do take a recess. So we have one more major discussion item and then the final aspects of the meeting. So I suggest we take a short recess right now, and then we'll start with a second discussion item. So if we could recess for five, 10 minutes max, and then we'll start the remainder of the meeting.